To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good morning, everybody. Uh, it's gonna be a warm day, be careful if you're outside and drink lots of water. Call a meeting to order, look for a motion to approve the agenda, no additions or corrections?
Nope.
That's printed. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Minutes from the eight seventeen meeting.
I read through and they all look fine, so I will move to accept.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, minutes approved. General public concern. When generally public be concerned? Seeing, hearing none, we will move on to Ben Rasmussen with Community and Family Resources, and he can tell us a little bit about this proclamation that he would like the county to approve.
So, uh, my name is Ben Rasmussen, who works with Community and Family Resources for a treatment agency and prevention agency in regards to substance use and misuse. And, uh, every year during the month of September, uh, we celebrate National Recovery Month. So, uh, individuals that have had some type of a substance misuse problem, uh, we'd like to try to recognize the fact that, you know, they have made the steps to go through recovery and, uh, are on that path of healing. Uh, this is typically something that's nationwide, uh, nationwide recognition. The governor typically signs, uh, the proclamations for these as well. And so, uh, we just wanted to be able, since Humboldt is one of the counties that we serve, uh, we wanted to, to bring that in front of you guys in hopes that you will recognize that and support that as well.
Any questions for Ben?
I, I did bring brochures on our agency, if you're not familiar with us.
We actually got a couple of those.
Probably have, but I'll leave, I'll leave a couple.
Okay.
So, that, we, uh, you know, we have a variety of, variety of grants that, that serve, serve counties, whether it be specifically, we have grants in regards to opioids. Uh, and then we have, have wider grants that are more broad to cover any of the areas that, that might be needed. So, uh, we try to, try to serve just about everybody we can and serve the lifespan to make sure that we're, we're addressing everybody's needs, so.
Excellent.
I'm on that board.
And your, your office is in the building, I'm assuming?
Uh, I actually work out, I'm on the prevention side, so I actually work from Munster City, where my office is from. But we have a space in the, in the newer building that, you know, last year got put up though. My main office is in Munster City.
So, where we have our meeting, is that where you are? Over behind McDonald?
Uh, we would be there, um, from time to time. Most, most, I spend, well, I live in Munster City, so I cover a lot of that area, but, um, I do a few things up in here. I've seen David at some of the border health meetings and just because we've had, have some connections that we've, we've made up here within schools and certain things like that. So, I, I cover kind of this, this area up here in Fort Hodge, Pocahontas, Calhoun.
I'm on that board, and I guess I would make a motion to authorize Eric to sign proclamation for the National Recovery Month.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Ben, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would you like everyone on the board to sign this? Because there's a bunch of signatures.
That's just a template that we print up.
Do you have one in particular to sign, or?
You can sign that, that one if you'd like. I, I know I emailed the, what I had to Peggy, so if you guys would like.
Is it any different? Do you have anything different than?
That's exactly what he said.
I can sign this, or everyone can, whatever you would like.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that'd be great. If you guys want to sign, sign that, I'd be happy to, uh, to get a picture of it as well.
Well, we need pictures.
I would have dressed up a little better today if I had the pictures.
And we'll need it, I'll need to get a copy of that before he takes off on it, too.
Alright.
For our record.
Well, these are five spots, we could make it extremely official.
Have you seen much changes with this COVID stuff going on with people?
Um, it's really individualized, based on building and county. Uh, you know, some, some counties are, you know, really have a lot of things closed off, don't want people in, uh, into the buildings. Others are, you know, doing kind of what we're doing here, spacing out, masking up if you want, want to have a mask to protect yourself and others. So, it's really just kind of a, an individual, case by case basis. The thing that's probably gonna hurt us most is, uh, school services, which is, a lot of schools are not allowing outside visitors. You know, uh, just trying to work that around and try to offer a virtual, because we do a lot of, a lot of classroom-based, uh, programming. So, trying to offer some type of a virtual lesson plan for those schools is probably one of the things that's been the most challenging, but we're getting through it. It's all, it's all daily changing world.
Yeah, changes every day.
Well, anything else in regards to that? We'll try to get a picture here, I guess, at some point.
Yeah.
In the meantime, in the essence of time, uh, Ben doesn't mind waiting a minute or two. Does everyone have a chance to look at the claims?
I don't have to wait for Peggy.
Oh, okay. But, did you, then we could do that quick, because, and I already heard discussion about the, there's some money in there for the dam research. Excellent.
Are you gonna do the hollowing over here in the wall?
That's you, Ben.
Whatever works best for you guys. I'm, I'm pretty flexible.
Whatever you, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll just step up quick.
Alright.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to.
He needs somebody to take the picture.
I don't know, he needs somebody on his camera to take one.
Morning, Ben.
How are you?
Hot. I didn't want a drink, Sam, if I tear it off, how do I do this?
Pull it near the.
Well, maybe it's not, mine's tied around the back.
Oh, yours is tied around the back?
Yeah, I was in a hurry. I should do it like that, shouldn't I? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've been using them, cheap Menards masks, finally got. But, normal custom cloth ones.
See, I like those.
They're a little bit easier.
I would like to get some of those, but I haven't even taken the time to go online and see.
Rachel just got some.
Oh, alright.
Plain black one, she's right here.
I can't get it.
Get in there.
We're just gonna move down to claims real briefly, so I'd be able to hear them quick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Yep, you too.
Are you gonna go claims?
Yep, yep, yep.
I get, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents on general, fifty thousand, seven, seven, nine, and forty-nine cents on drainage.
I'll second Dave's motion. Any further discussion on that?
So, what were our questions about?
Oh, nothing really. I just, I just noticed that there was, uh, money in there for conservation, they had some research down on the dam. That was all.
That's a research program that they've been doing.
Yep. No, no question on it, this was in there.
Have a conservation budget.
So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, claims approved. Is there anything else in this neat box to?
No.
Okay, I'll run that in there. We're moving right along, and you're next. Thank you.
Well, I feel that, that would be only fair to him, because he's been two hours late before us, so. He hasn't, the gender has.
Looking, looking at his mouth, that he's, he's got some mask, he's been waiting a long time, but he's used to that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that camp doesn't try to take it up, take it from you guys.
Patient and severe.
That's good. I'm a customer, too.
Okay, Lee made the motion, who seconded it? On claims?
I did.
Okay, this is the big book.
This is the big book. Only, for me, it's just a book. Maybe it's a little bigger than that.
Wow.
But, uh, yeah, the, the one thing that I've got on the agenda is to accept and place on file the Humboldt County Fiscal Year 2020 Official Report of the County Highway Engineer. In layman's terms, this is our annual report, which fills out, uh, uh, our revenue as well as our expenditures, and it's broken down based on department, it's broken down based on what category we use. Page one is basically the full summary. At the top of the page, it tells you what our carryover balance is. Line item twenty-one tells you what our unobligated balance is, which is what our realistic balance is. If all of our construction, uh, happened and our equipment showed up tomorrow, basically that's what our balance is. But, yeah, this is just a breakdown of what we spent. We have to have it submitted to the DOT for their approval by September fifteenth every year. Uh, I got approval from the DOT last Monday.
When you say you got approval, they've already looked at it?
They've already looked at and approved it.
Approved it, okay.
But it's got a list of, I mean, this thing has everything. It's got a list of our current equipment, uh, local construction projects that we use, administration breakdown. Our total expenditures on page two, line item number two.
Is there anything in particular when you put this together that was noteworthy, or you had any particular thought process on them, punching the numbers in here?
No, I mean, Sue cooks the books pretty well and makes it a lot easier for me with her reports that she gives out. We met with Peggy here three, four weeks ago, looking at, uh, one particular reimbursement, and got our, our numbers to balance with, uh, our year-end balance, and everything else is kind of has a position to go to. Line item to go to. I had a question for you, Ben. Sure. Like, when you got them categorized, like, for, uh, snow and ice control, traffic control, road clearing, like, under snow and ice, is that the labor involved also? Okay. So, that's our expenditure for purchasing blades, uh, running the equipment, uh, the manpower, buying sand, fluoride, and all of that is all categorized into that, uh, set of well categories.
So, page three, uh, line twenty-four, the FEMA disaster rate, was that last year's flooding?
That was from last year's flooding, yep. That was our reimbursement from last year.
That was rock and whatnot, but?
There was, uh, rock, uh, some ditch cleanout up there on Montana Avenue, that little stretch south of the county line, by, uh, what we call Warman Bridge. And it was the repair of the head wall down by Rick Peterson's house that we did last year. On the blacktop.
That seems to be holding up well.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, any other questions, comments, thought processes for Ben? I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the Humboldt County 2020 Official Report.
Alright.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay? No?
On the local funded projects, how can you have, what's it, this thing over here?
Which page is that?
Page one.
Sheet ten-one, it says. On sheet twenty, from northwest corner east, nine tenths of a mile, project number VRS CO forty-nine, or forty-six, CO forty-six, seventy, sixty, forty-six.
Yes.
You've got zeros all the way down, but you've got a project total of sixteen thousand.
Correct, because that was paid for in, uh, the previous fiscal year. That's the box culvert just east of Eric's house. Uh, everything was paid for except for the retainage in this fiscal year, and that project was fully funded out of farm-to-market, so we didn't actually have any expense in this fiscal year.
Okay.
But, without having, uh, retainage all paid for, it wasn't considered a hundred percent done by the DOT.
Gotcha. So, it was, uh, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars?
That was, uh, that was our day labor for the project. That was the cost for our guys to haul rock up for backfill around the culvert, and any additional dirt that was needed to finish it off, and then, uh, the seeding of the project afterwards. Basically, all of that was day labor.
And probably fencing, did you have to do?
All of that was day labor. Did you fancy give anything else to that?
It just lapped into twenty twenty, but it's essentially gone in.
It's a good question.
It was just twenty twenty was the, uh, the final retainage we paid for in twenty twenty.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Anything else, Ben? Did all that fun number come in?
Um, last Wednesday, we did the, uh, local construction project down on what we call the Gosh Park Extension. It's that one mile stretch between Highway one sixty-nine and Gosh Park. That's the one that, uh, Mark Daggy was in here a month ago talking about. We replaced the eighteen-inch tin whistle that was underneath the roadway, uh, that had been damaged on the north side and was down to about a five-inch round diameter. We replaced that with a thirty-inch concrete culvert, backfilled it. Thursday, we went back and we topped it back off again with rock. Friday morning at about quarter to seven, a guy on a motorcycle wrecked in that five-foot wide patch location. Last I knew, he was airfighted this morning. I have not heard any updates. Last I knew, it was seven broken ribs and a broken clavicle. We as the county, I feel like we're covered. Uh, our signs were put up as a bump ahead. Here's what I can tell from looking at the accident. He saw it late, hit the brakes, and skidded through our five-foot patch.
And then lost control.
And then lost control. Almost rode it out, but, yeah. Um, I have a question, because I have had comments from other people, mainly about this one south of Hardy, you know, where they repaired that culvert there, same, same type of thing where we had a sinkhole and patched it. Would it be possible to asphalt patch them on a temporary base, and then, you know, after a year or so, rip them out, redo it right after they settle, rather than just keep laying it to the end? I, I don't know, because I, I know these spots are dangerous, but it's part of road maintenance. I didn't know, are there other solutions we could look for? We've, we've done it in the past where we've overlaid right afterwards. The problem is, is you get the continuous setting. So, so you're either gonna end up with a dip or a bump on gravel or something more permanent with asphalt, you know? I guess gravel's cheaper, we've always looked at that route, and as soon as Blacktop Service has their patching crew back in the area, I've got four locations for them to patch right now. I mean, there's the one on Gosh, there's the one south of Hardy, there's the one east on the road towards, uh, Renwick. I mean, we've got three right now that I can think of, and I'm sure there's four. Oh, there's, there's just, there's three spot locations on sheet twenty.
Ample by boat?
Right.
Would it be advisable to put a sign up, gravel patch ahead?
We've got, usually, we've got either, we either put out a, a bump sign or a loose gravel sign, um, depending on what we actually have available at the shop.
For those, when there is a area like that waiting, is it signed to something, like some note?
There's, there's advanced note.
Okay. Anything else for Ben?
But, you know, I mean, if you guys want me to start patching with asphalt, I mean, we just go on the cheaper route for the county.
That's drawn running away.
The one-time permanent fixes to let it settle throughout the, throughout the summer season or even the winter, and patch it in the spring.
And if they be, well, it is settling, which they do, you do keep it level for red rock?
Yep, I mean, we topped it off on Thursday, and then I had, uh, my partner come back in Friday after the accident and topped the road back off again.
Well, the time they settle, they're just continuing to settle. Those are deep enough.
Right, and this one's, this one's shallow enough. I mean, it's only three and a half feet deep, and we started backfilling on paved routes with just rock here two, three years ago, because we found that it settles less than if you backfill with dirt under the road. It will continue to settle with dirt, like south.
Yeah, you can't pack them hard.
That one always, it's always settled.
You don't want to be taking a drink of coffee when you go fast.
No, but I, I got those three locations scheduled to be patched as well.
Well, that was even, you even posted that on Facebook, that, that was down there, it was gonna be closed.
To half-day anticipation, I think we got done about one-thirty on Wednesday, so it was a little over a half-day to get it done. But it's, yeah, it's unfortunate, I have friends with this guy's cousin, so, he's on his way to the labs for work.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Ben. Yep, thanks, Ben. Well, we'll probably have to wait until nine for the, for the western, for, do we need to go into drainage on that?
Yeah.
I suppose we do, because she's gonna have to take notes.
I think that one.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to go into drainage. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are in drainage.
Morning, guys.
Hi, guys.
More to this hot weather?
Boy, it's gonna be steamy this week.
Oops, the guy with the beard is on and cleaned up, holy moly.
It's gonna be hot this week, I'm getting rid of that.
I haven't got rid of the beard, and gonna be hungry.
How's that thermostat working for you?
It's great. My daughter bought it for me for a water bottle, so it does double duty in the morning.
But, there you go, getting your money's worth out of it.
Yeah, says daddy needs to drink more water, so I try.
So, you just keep putting coffee?
Those waters are good for that.
Yes, they are. Oh, did they? My wife says you drink too much, my daughter says I don't drink enough. I think that's different stuff, though.
The water that you put in, like, drink. Morning, Chris.
Good morning.
Well?
I passed on the email from Rick.
I think we all looked at that.
Everyone. That said he wasn't going to be here.
Why not?
Because he didn't have any information, it looks like. Let me get him on the phone. Do you want to try? Okay. See if I have his number on here.
He's here in two weeks, he's been three and a half, done nothing.
Right, let me go get his phone number, okay?
You guys seen anything out there or heard anything on it?
Did you guys get a copy of what he says?
Hey, Rick, it's Trish. Hi, um, we're in the board meeting, can we put you on speakerphone a minute? Okay, hang on, just a moment. Okay, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Alrighty. Um, I'll let, whoever go ahead.
What's going on? Well, I was hoping to have a lot more information for you, but, uh, what we got from the team was limited, we were, um, meant to try and get some more. Uh, some of what we found actually was useless, and my guy's been working on all this, but then, uh, we're a budget, so. I thought we had a lot more for you by now, but I don't. But they can handle this, it's, uh, it's familiar, it costs you an authority in the areas we want to dig. It's gonna be easier to do it earlier than some years, uh, but we only keep that in mind, I would say.
Doesn't it pay you an extra sixty-seven thousand dollars to keep an eye on this and get it done? This thing's drugged on for three years now, what's going on with it? We want to get it done and completed.
The contractor drugged things out. Um, we didn't do anything to drag it out. Um, they're positioned, they're working on other jobs, or, yeah. Um, if they're trying to get strung out like this, it's put it back on the contractor.
Well, we've seen a lot of excuses, but we don't seem to get any action. It starts to piss me off. Sure.
Um, all, the landowners are sitting here in the boardroom, too, and from what your email sent us, it sounds like you're planning to go out and start digging as soon as the crops are out, locate all these connections, and, uh, then mark them and get the ads built, built, or printed as.
Um, hopefully this week, we can see exactly what we got and try to figure out where we need to dig.
Rick, what's the number that we're looking at? How many of these connections are we talking? Are we talking ten or a thousand?
So, uh, once we're met, get twenty, and I'm probably gonna pick others, um.
But, what do you think, Dial?
Yeah, there wouldn't be any more than that. Um, some of the private ones, I can tell you right where they're at. Um, the county ones, there's ways, the two crossovers that are in my field, I marked them, I pointed to what they kinda told me where they are, so I've got a pretty good idea where they are. I thought as we can go digging on that old county tile and I got a tile finder, we can run that down and they'll be, the crossovers will be easy enough for a little. Couple tiles that I have put in will be difficult. I've got a picture of the crossover down on Bruce's with the long lat on it and I've got a picture of the one at seventy-one hundred feet that has a long lat on it, so you can get real close on those. The one up at like around eighty-five hundred, I think. I just got, I made a mark with my, so I know pretty close to where it's at. Um, you know, if there's somebody that's got a camera that you know that's been running up the pile, we could find one of the other ones pretty easy. And the other one we're just gonna have to dig.
Of course, that's providing there's any water going through it. You can't send the pile through the drive or a camera through the drive by right now, can we?
Yeah, I think you can.
I don't know anything about it, I just thought if the guy can do it.
I know the sewer does, when they camera sewers, they kinda like to have it dry because you can't see nothing when it's full of water.
That's what Gary Johnson told me too, I talked to him this morning and he said that if it's one that you gotta push the cable, uh, that cable weighs on the bottom and, well, a camera is hard to see if it's in.
Underwater, yeah.
Okay.
And I was wondering too, like that, so if we could get somebody, if it's viable, get somebody with a camera and, you know, some of that ten, fifteen foot digging to get to this main, uh, if we could use a camera to run two, three, four hundred feet in two directions, uh, it saves.
It'd save a lot of digging.
Yeah.
Rick, do you know anybody with a camera?
Well, I don't really, I'm just gonna, I can check with other people, um, and see if they just know anybody, um.
Gary Johnson?
Well, here's some checking on that.
I think Jeff might have one.
I think he does.
Yeah, yes, it's a possibility, I'd have to tell him and see what he's got.
Uh-oh. The people up in Spencer.
There's one in Cherokee and, uh, that Gary, he works with, uh, I think maybe here in Humboldt. You have something like that, whether it's that one?
I know Roto-Ruter, they got a camera too that they use, I don't know how long it is, but they, they do a lot of field tile work. Roto-Ruter out of Webster City, I've talked to them about, he says if you ever need any cameras, he says we got them.
Several, several.
They're around on cameras, yes. But I do know, Rick, uh, future work in Humboldt County depends that you get this problem resolved quickly and accurately.
Yeah, I understand. You know, it's not one of those projects that just goes on forever and it makes hard for you to explain.
I'll have one, I guess, question from the comments that been mentioned that Dial would maybe help out with this, you know, if it comes to digging and locating and all that. Are you willing to do that? Uh, I mean, maybe, probably gonna be after harvest so you move around out there freely without running through crops. I don't, I don't want anybody just offering you services if you're not agreeable.
Well, I'm, I'm agreeable, but on the other hand, I'll be harvesting too.
Right.
So it's just timing issue.
Absolutely.
Timing issue.
But I think it's.
That's a good question, because we don't wanna intrude on anybody's time, but we can make it all pretty easy.
Well, whatever it takes and whomever it is, I think that, golly, was also as soon as possible after harvest to get this resolved.
Yes.
I've been on the board for over a year and a half now and I, I feel that we're talking about this one all the time, so it's getting to be, come on, see it should've been done. That's my two cents.
No one wants to put this behind us more than I do, so.
Well, does anyone have anything else in regards to this right now?
No.
Okay, well, I guess that's all we've got here, Rick. Trish, you got anything for, well, you've heard the comments, wanna get it done, wanna get it figured out.
I guess I'm really sorry, making a trip for people and, uh, I would like to treat enough to be here the next few years.
That, uh, it's nice of Dial to offer, but I don't think you should have to put the burden on him.
But that's why I ask.
I agree.
No, this is entirely up to him and obviously this is not a free-granta thing because this is, uh.
No, we asked you, we talked to Dial, he's able to do it. We're not gonna put you pressure on him.
So that's a good point by Harland and we asked Dial, but you may want to in your researching have somebody lined up that is able to get out when the crops come out of the field this fall.
Yes, yes.
And I know, you know, Dial's very helpful and will, you know, be as helpful as he can on this, but yeah, he's busy and I think we need to make sure you've got somebody that can go out if any digging or camera work needs to be done as soon as possible.
There you go.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
I've got pictures here on Bruce's and Jordan was taking pictures at the same time I was taking them, and that's got the long and lat on it.
Excellent. Where's that set?
That's down on Walms.
On the field of the.
Yeah, on the side rocks on the. Yep. So I know there was pictures taken, Jordan was.
If this one is missed?
Yeah, it's not on the bill.
It's not on that though.
I don't think any crossovers are on that.
This is, and you took this yourself. The higher view apparently, or you three, it should have a higher view, so you're sitting there, but it'll work cheaper and you've got better information. So that's all we're looking for.
Yeah.
Is the locations.
Location right there and the hookups.
And the pictures are very nice too.
I got, I got a picture of, that's the one at seventy-one hundred, but the one up at around eighty-five hundred, I don't have anything of that. And I don't know that Jordan does either because I don't think he was there when he did it.
Oh, okay.
Jordan was there that day.
Well, that, I'll just say.
I mean, I just wanted to know.
Hey, Rick, are you still there for the conference? Just, uh, this is a general question on the district side.
Is that right, she keeps the one?
All the things that we're talking about, the digging, the camera, the time involved, uh, this is on Jacobson Westergaard dime, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, that was just a question, pull it, verify it, yep. All we're doing this.
All right, well, I don't have anything else, Rick, I don't know if anybody else has, any more questions?
I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut.
Because whatever's good, I can't be.
Probably not gonna make anybody very happy, so.
Okay, we know what needs to be done and we wanna get it done as soon as possible.
Yes, I agree with you.
Anything else? Would you let Rick go?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Rick, for taking the time.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll see ya. Bye.
You can get that back.
Yep, there you are.
Hi, Trish. I just wanted to take your copies.
Well, we are in drainage, anything else in regards to drainage, this or anything else? Yo, do you have?
Three and nine, Humboldt, Webster.
Oh, any good news?
No.
No, of course not.
Railroad.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry again.
So this, this is our portion of the.
Yeah, it'll be, excuse me, we pay it.
You do that?
Yeah, late night, apparently.
Did you hear anything other than this?
No, but they are not making much progress. The people that Dan was talking with, the gentleman.
Railroad people?
With the railroad.
Right.
Great to work with until they got to passing it off to the legal.
Oh, yeah.
And it just stalled. We are quickly approaching the two-year thing, so we can't do anything about it unless we file. I don't know who set a meeting for next week to discuss it with Webster County.
Well, we don't want the timeframe to pass.
Uh-uh, that was not good. I mean, if we're gonna do something, we have to do it.
Have you had, heard anything from, uh, Webster County drainage clerk or anyone else?
No, that's what I heard from her.
You did hear that? Okay, she, that was her comment, I, that sounds like a pretty fair idea.
And this work is actually being done in Webster County?
Yes.
Yes, it's just a joint district and this is just unfortunate.
And it's really unfortunate because, you know, we have these situations a lot when they've caused the problem.
Yeah, when the railroad is.
The railroad, and so then we have to live with it and either it's a beast to try to get them to fix it or us to fix it and then we have to pay for it.
Yeah, and then we have a big battle and they.
And then when you go back around and try to divvy it up and they wanna fight it.
Now, I got a percentage of it.
Well, they have decocks and a lot of lawyers.
Yes, they do.
And we don't wanna argue about, 'cause we shouldn't have to pay that much, but yet if you do damage to our tracks or.
And the problem here is it's such a small district that it's gonna be a lot of dollars per acre just to fix it.
I mean, I think, I think the only way it's gonna get resolved is if we file something.
Well, I would send that to Webster County. If we, the date that it expires or that it were two years, if we don't do something, that is Humboldt's opinion, if we don't do something before then, we apparently left the whole bag.
Yeah. The worst you can be out is the legal to file.
Right.
If we decide that it isn't.
That's just legal, that's the Dan's conversations with the.
It's gonna be more expensive to file.
So that's just part of the process, but they, I think, you set up that with Webster County and the teleconference next, or, yeah, teleconference next week, Matul's, there was some other thought process, you know, that this was better if the railroad was just agreeable, which they aren't.
It sounded like they were agreeable till it got to their legal team.
Yeah, yeah, they were, this conversation with this Ryan, well, on the, you know, maintenance side was very agreeable, but he had to pass it off to the legal team.
He doesn't have the final agreement, he can't make.
Yeah, he can't, no, he was, he was understanding, this was coming from mature engineering work with him and they said, oh, yeah, this is, they understood everything that was laid out, he did.
Right.
But then he asked, he doesn't, not the one that can say, oh, yeah, that's, that's fine. Not his call.
Yeah, and, and honestly, if they didn't make you go through all those extra expenses to cure the problem, it won't be so terribly bad, you know, you could probably pour under that track for forty, fifty thousand dollars instead of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Because of all the regulations that are involved.
Yeah.
And that's where I think their second plan to, um, go around it or whatever they were doing.
That's what I say, yeah, there is kind of an option.
Would've been better, but, but it, I don't know.
I think we should hear that next week again. And Webster, obviously it's a joint district, so they need to be involved in the thought process. Does that sound about right?
And is Webster the lead county on this? I think they are, they are, we.
We are.
Oh, we are.
We have the majority.
We have the majority of the land, okay.
But, yeah, this is happens to go into Webster.
Yeah, all right.
The crystal started. Okay, that's.
Put that on for the.
Yeah, I wonder what the landowners' thoughts are on this whole process, 'cause I mean, I haven't talked to a single landlord.
I don't know, I'm, that would be down in, is it, am I saying it correctly, southeast?
Well, yeah.
West, I didn't, I meant west.
Southwest, yeah, it's in District Two. No one's called me, I haven't talked to anybody.
I don't know. Like I say, if they don't wanna pursue it, at least something's filed before the two-year strike.
Yeah, right.
And then we can get them together and discuss.
Yeah, like I said, it won't cost a whole lot for that filing, at least then you have it filed.
All right.
Well, I'm gonna go back on to this thirty-five branch C, 'cause I still believe that on that, we need to figure out some way to, um, make the Kings and Jacobsons or whoever the engineer, the time tractor and have the ability to have that paper in front of Trish weekly, every other week, whatever, so that two years after, we aren't running around looking for somebody's pictures or whatever. I still believe that we oughta have some better checking system. And I know that we pay the engineer to do this, we pay the time tractor to do that, but if, if they would've gave her a copy of all that, just on a week, a week basis, she could've went back and looked at this and said, well, this is what I've got, Rick. I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, it ain't a bad idea, Bruce, I agree with you.
And it's nothing I have to do extra, honestly, all it would be is me.
Just put it in the file.
Filing it, keeping it.
For the simple fact that you have it, then we aren't looking for some just from the employee that left, that I don't care, and I think it's just something that we can do, uh, on a week-to-week basis. And if they don't do it on a week-to-week basis, the next time that they ask for a payment, we don't do it.
You'd also get more action if you withheld retainage until after the Estrel plant.
Well, that, I would definitely do it.
And I honestly.
The Estrel, Estrel should be in the farmer's hands a month before we finally have our final hearing.
So, in this case, you'd be relying on the contractor to put pressure on the engineer?
Yeah, 'cause he ain't getting paid because the engineer hasn't done his job.
That's a great idea.
And to be honest, I don't care that they live in Spencer or Estherville or wherever the town is and where you knew that when you took the job. And we have to have someone there taking what we asked was pictures verification of the coordinates so that it was all done. That, to me, is a no-brainer.
Well, Dial said that Jordan wasn't there that one day when they were doing it, and no, he didn't take pictures, so, and I thought Jordan was supposed to be there.
He was.
Every day.
That's why we paid him an extra sixty thousand.
So.
There's supposed to be someone there every day.
That's right.
And if they're not there, they shouldn't be covering up those connections.
That's right.
I agree. So, and I just.
I mean.
Lesson learned, I think, from now on, we need to, when you get the job, we want a weekly report, is what you were saying, in this office, every week, every Friday. When you get done, you pull out Friday night, we want a report.
Yeah, so it's on our desk Monday morning.
Yep.
It ain't a bad idea.
You could have expected that the contractor cannot cover up any connectors until.
So we have the report.
And I honestly thought.
Until the engineer's in there and.
And if they don't do it on a week-to-week basis, the next time that they ask for a payment, we don't do it.
You'd also get more action if you withheld retainage until after the Estill plant.
Well, that, I would definitely do it.
Yes.
And I honestly think...
The Estill should be in the farmer's hands a month before we finally have our final hearing.
So, in this case, you'd be relying on the contractor to put pressure on the engineer?
Yeah, 'cause he ain't getting paid because the engineer hasn't done his job.
That's a great idea.
And to be honest, I don't care that they live in Spencer, or Estoril, or wherever the town is, and where, you knew that when you took the job.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to have someone there taking what we asked was pictures, verification of the coordinates, so that it was all done. That, to me, is a no-brainer.
Well, Dial said that Jordan wasn't there that one day when they were doing it, and no, he didn't take pictures, so... And I thought Jordan was supposed to be there.
He was.
Every day.
That's why we paid him an extra sixty thousand.
So...
And there's supposed to be someone there every day.
That's right.
And if they're not there, they shouldn't be covering up those connections.
That's right.
I agree. So, and I just...
I mean...
Lesson learned, I think, from now on. We need to, when you bid the job, we want a weekly report, is what you were saying, in this office, every week. Every Friday, when you get done, you pull up Friday night, we want a report.
Yeah, so it's on our desk Monday morning.
Yep.
It ain't a bad idea.
You could have expect that the contractor cannot cover up any connectors until...
Till we have the report.
And I honestly thought...
Until the engineer's in there and...
Of course.
GPS.
Right.
That just couldn't get done.
That was in the contract.
That was in the contract?
Me either.
So, did the contractor cover it? Or did the engineer...
Not show up.
Not show up?
We don't know which, which was the problem.
Even if the engineer didn't show up, the contractor should've covered it, and still he showed up.
That's what it is.
Yeah, every connection was supposed to be photographed and inspected before it was covered. But somebody didn't do their job.
Well...
And I guess, in my opinion, it's hard to ask the contractor, this contractor for it, when it wasn't their specified job. You know, Rick was trying to get information from King.
I think Dave hit the nail on the head.
It was their job to do that.
It was Jacobson-Mustercard.
Yeah.
I mean...
That was stated. Yeah, I agree with that thought process. They're the ones that dropped the ball, not the contractors.
But this carryin' three years, that's on the contractor, that's not on Webster?
Right.
Yeah, that part dragged it out. That was a lot of it, it's due to the weather. They, they had miserable weather.
There were so many issues that...
They could've got it done, 'cause there was a spell where it was dry. It was a bad deal there, but...
But King carried it for three years, and then it's on like Jacobson-Mustercard.
Well, I just think that if we did something like that, Trish would at least be able to go back in the file and say, "Well, this is this week's report, and this is this week's report, and all this stuff is on there."
Yeah.
I mean, I can't verify whether they're accurate.
Accurate, or they skipped one or not.
Yeah, I can't do that, but I know what was reported.
But if they don't, if they knew that Jordan was there on that connection, that it took a picture, that the picture was whatever, or the coordinates were, I mean, we aren't trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're just trying to make them be accountable for, and we hand them a check and say, "Here, we're happy that we just gave you a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this."
To know that you're gonna have the connection.
And part of the money was distributed when they brought all the pipe up, and then it sat out there all winter. They had to have that extra money because the pipe was on the ground.
Yeah.
There was all kinds of things that were... I mean, that case from beginning to end was bad, so... Anyway, I'm just trying to make it so we don't ever, ever have to go through that again. This is just miserable. Makes us look really stupid.
Well, it doesn't make us look so bad as compared to the engineering company that dropped the ball when it was specified that they do this. So we, we did our due diligence.
Yeah, the contract was written up right.
Yeah.
It was, they just didn't fulfill the contract.
Well, when those guys come in, they sit along that raw wall back there, and they've already paid money out, and we don't have anything to give them back.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I understand, you know, you had an employee that didn't fulfill his job, but...
Kinda like Bruce said, though...
What do you do? I mean, there should've been a backup.
Yeah, that's where they live, and that's specified. That's a big chunk of what they're getting paid for.
Yeah.
And I agree with Bruce. I don't care if they live in some city.
You could've contracted to somebody who's close to...
The can.
You know, they could've done that, too. They could've subcontracted to somebody who lived in the area, and then they wouldn't have had such a big deal.
Should we do the same thing when Ben has concrete, has to have a guy at the concrete plant to make sure that all the stuff is being done in a way specified by the state? Or when we're doing blacktop, you have to find out there? And, and calls for early mornings, late nights? Just have to do it, and whether they live in Estoril, or the work's being done in Humboldt? You bid the job. It's not my fault.
That's right. It's just like anything else. You have to have systems in place to hold people accountable. That's, that's, that's the way it is anymore. We're not so...
Disappointing.
It is disappointing.
It is.
It's not the best way to have to do it, but it's, it's what we have to do anymore to safeguard things.
I just like to be, I don't think, you know, I got all my crops to take out and hurry and go out and start digging.
Yeah.
But he would, I mean, seriously, I don't think he'd wanna hire someone when he knows, talks to me where the tile is. Just give or take, it's, you know? So, I mean, if you're gonna...
It could be as simple as Dial going out there and commenting a lap in.
This is what I think it is.
Here's where the GPS is at. Here's roughly where my private tile was at.
Right.
So if we camera it, that'll help alleviate a lot of his problems.
I sent Derek a message, and of course, he might not answer for a while, but I'll try to get a hold of him later.
Right, you know, go to Ruder, out of Webster City. They have a, a camera that goes a long ways up tiles, 'cause he...
And will it GPS the marks, too, then?
I...
I wonder?
I would believe it would, because...
Will they sing the song while they're out in the middle?
They do. They sing a nice jingle. And then, and these, these guys, when they say they're gonna be there at...
That's it.
Three oh five, they go at three oh four.
I know.
And they jump out of the van and they run.
And everything.
I have never seen an outfit that comes to that.
Run. It's just as simple. It's just, I mean, it's amazing.
Whatever it takes.
Right.
Camera, backhoe, whatever.
And the things for drainage? I don't know. I just worry.
Okay. What do you say, Dave?
I'm gonna go out of drainage.
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor? Time closed on a drainage.
Sure, I guess you have to ask Webster whatever works for them next week, and you probably check with Begging to see what we've scheduled on Jordan.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make sure you don't miss that deadline.
No.
Yeah, I really wanna make sure that it's being allowed.
Uh, I, I know that's a real small district, and it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars spread over four hundred acres.
Yeah, and then you're gonna put that money in, and then you're smoking it out of here.
Right.
Did, did I hear that right, here a couple weeks ago, that Jordan left? And now he's working for the engineering firm that you guys just hired?
Yep.
No, it's a...
I thought you were talking about two different people.
It was a farmer request.
Yeah, that farmer request.
Yeah. Requested for me, and now he works for Humboldt.
Yeah.
Right.
Makes you nervous, don't it?
My absolute problems. I mean, the staking and everything was right. He did all of that.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, the project works.
No, I didn't do it.
It's just that they never marched their little...
They didn't mark the cross-tile connection.
Yeah.
The first project, there was issues with, they'd come one day, and then it rained, and then didn't show up, and then so it's like...
And then they had the Dolly Manson on Main Street that they left for, and, yeah.
It's been one thing after another.
Welcome back.
I love it.
Okay, moving along.
It's Randy telling her.
Randy will not be here.
Oh, okay.
So, um, did you get his report, I think? Okay. Did, uh, I think that was basically what he was gonna do, and it's in his report here. Peggy, did he have, mention anything to me?
It's for you guys, if you perhaps you want.
One of those can't fire gapping, please.
Um, he didn't mention anything to me, anything special, other than, this is what his report was for you. And I guess, he didn't really ask for any special motion or anything on it.
No.
I think he just wanted to go over it with you.
Something about Randy, does it very nice...
How about Ben? Did you have anything from the zoning board?
Uh, we had the zoning board meeting. The Jason property owners also dialed in and, and, uh, asked questions. They wanted to make sure to clarify that this was a switching station, not a substation. Uh, so there's not gonna be any...
Big transformers and stuff.
Big transformers or humming. I mean, that was the property owner's worry, was that he was gonna have background noise.
Yeah.
At his leverage.
Yeah.
And, uh, it seems like the general concept is that this is just a switching station to transfer power between Mid-American and Cornmilk. And they think that it's, uh, a way to backfeed the ethanol plant over in Goldfield. In the event that they lose power from their main source, that they can backfeed energy to them.
These, with this, they, they realized in the past that with storms come through, if they lose transmission lines, they'll lose a whole area, and they can't backfeed it from another area. So if they add these switching stations in, they can shut it and bring it from a different route. And, uh, that's kinda what they're doing all over the state.
And that's all that they're looking at putting in in this area.
Okay.
And the other one was a, uh, an acreage that they parceled off, and it has to be a residential versus...
Ag.
Okay. All right, you may, I see this note on the email, still need a m- a member for the zoning board. Is that anybody, anybody stepping up to the plate yet on that?
Uh, I don't know that anybody's actually under a mandate for it.
So that's, yeah, definitely need a, another member for the board. So I guess basically it's a report. And any discussion or thought processes on that report?
Uh, the one there, I asked him, I had several calls from different guys on the board adjustment and the zoning. Some of them don't know what the difference of the two are. So I asked Randy to get a meeting, to address it, and get on both sides there and explain. The board adjustment does this, but zoning has to do this.
Okay.
They rezone, the board adjustment gives the variance. And they didn't understand that.
Okay.
That's why I got going there.
Okay.
Randy was gonna get a board.
Both of them maybe, so they can understand their responsibilities?
This is this, and this is the...
That's a good idea. Real good idea.
I think he was shooting for next week.
I think so. About that's what he said he'd try to get.
Okay, that's good.
So, Benny, we're out. Do you know the location of this thing now? Is it on the west side of Mike and Amy?
It's on the west side of Mike's place.
I seen about...
They were on doing some boring gear two weeks ago, I think.
Yeah. They went out into that cornfield, so I didn't know how far it was going, how...
It's like five, five and a half acres, just on the west side of, of Mike's place, um...
So you're gonna use that much land?
Well, they're gonna, they're purchasing that much land, but they said the area, or the size of the area that they're gonna actually have a footprint is relatively small, and they're gonna cheat that as far west as possible.
So if you go by, when you go east on Highway Three, you'll see that old invitation where they went out into the field, and they had a boring truck out in there, so it's about a couple blocks from Mike's place, or Mike's Grove, there on the line.
Which is, he's got a nice established...
Yeah. Yeah, he stopped at my house and had some concerns, 'cause a lot of the letter he got had the wrong dates on it.
Yeah, he stopped at my, at my house.
I, I sent him your way. Sorry. I said, "I know somebody that's on the board. You can talk to them."
Yeah. Yeah, he stopped at my house.
All right. So I guess we're good there. Um, now we have the approved resolution setting the date for public hearing on a proposal to enter into general obligation loan agreement and to borrow money that they're under. Thank you, Ben. Which would be in reference to our previous discussions on the bonding, correct?
Yes. Um, I gave you first some information from Mike Maloney that lists the timeline, and then the dollar amounts that he came up with, as far as, um, the project goes. So those are just for information.
Peggy, I have a question on that.
Sure.
Um, 'cause I'm, I've never been through this, so I'm nervous that I was signing it. I guess that's, and Ben is a taxpayer. So when we had the people, the sheriff had his request, fire department had their request, and then the conservation had their request, is that money going to be still distributed back from that, those entities, back to the county?
If you ask them to, we would just be the pass-through.
Well, that's why...
But if you don't ask them to, or they don't agree to, then we would be funding it totally by the taxpayers, by...
That's, that's...
Similar to, like, the city of Humboldt paying for their own cameras for their police cars in the twenty-eight E agreement. And I think that's something we would look at with these local fire departments, that when they do get the grant money that is used to refund the county, they'd want that written in that, in my opinion.
Well, that was, that's my feelings, too, that if, you know, they have applied for grants, and they're gonna get some of them back, I would hope that that would go, but, you know, I mean, still, one of them ran on the parade that, well, we got a ten thousand dollar grant, and Humboldt County would pay this amount, we could, now we could buy this other piece of equipment.
I know.
Then we're still gonna be the evil people.
That's something you will need to have John Bailey, the county attorney, help you with, 'cause he could put some twenty-eight E agreements to- together, based on how you want them to, to repay.
Right.
Or if you want them to.
Well, I don't know if we have a spare two point six.
Yeah, right now, this is the everything included letter.
Yeah, the...
The Christmas list.
I want everything that, I want my Christmas list.
Yeah, you can still go less than this, but you should go more than this.
Yeah, this would be not to exceed amount.
Right.
And then by, what date do we have down, uh, board meetings? I think then it's September fourteenth, you have to have the actual amount that you want to bond for. Is that correct, if I'm reading this correctly?
I'm sorry.
Then, then is it September fourteenth that we'd have to have the actual amount that we want to bond for?
Right.
That's the...
You've got a couple weeks. Here's a couple for the press, if they wanna have that to look at, too.
Well, I kind of had a couple of conversations with Dan, and I said, you know, I'm, I've had people ask me, well, the dam or the conservation board, and I'm all for it. I mean, it fixes something, but in my opinion, we oughta have more of a direction as to what we're gonna do, as opposed to, oh, we'll just throw this wall and see if we can get any of it to...
Yeah.
That's, I'd like to know, we know what we're getting with the others, the radios and the equipment that we purchased, and are obligated to, and Dean and what he needs, so I guess I, that's my opinion. I'm only one of five, so...
Makes sense. Okay, so the reason you're here today is because Dorsey and Whitney set the paperwork that puts all this into place, gets it started. So the first thing that we're gonna have is a resolution setting the date and time for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into the general obligation loan agreement and to borrow money hereunder. So in the bigger packet that I gave you, which was behind the other stuff, should be your resolution and all the paperwork from Dorsey and Whitney. So there will be some, some minutes for the chairman to sign, and the chairman will also, if the resolution gets approved, the chairman will sign that. And then I think, from there, it's probably just me, so...
So we need to approve the resolution setting the date, as they've stated.
Yep. And hopefully you will go by the timeline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the time is flexible, 'cause we don't have anything that far out on agenda.
Yeah, we can pick nine o'clock, or eight forty-five, or whatever. And then on our list of wish list, we could set our not to exceed amount at the two point seven eighty thousand. Uh, and then on the fourteenth, have until the fourteenth to cross out or lower any of these numbers. Is that the way it is?
You probably don't wanna set your amount until you have that public hearing.
Right. That's what I think.
Yeah.
Correct.
That gives you the flexibility to change.
Right. But do, don't we have to give them a not to exceed amount right now?
Yes, it's already on.
That's what I thought. That's what I was thinking.
One of them has it on, one of the documents, and there's two of those papers there.
I don't think that's official until the fourteenth.
And one has it on there, and the other...
Until the fourteenth. I don't think that's official. That's just a number you can't go over.
Right, yes, sure.
We will not go...
We don't have to do all...
We don't have to go that high.
Right.
No, no.
Right, right, that's just our dollar amount that we are setting the goal.
And that's not official till the hearing and all that work goes on.
That's kind of.
So we're just, they, go pick a date for the resolution, so we can set a date for the public hearing.
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion to set the date of September 14th at nine o'clock for our public hearing for this bond issue with the not to exceed amount of 2.2 million 780,000 dollars.
Sounds like a little money.
I don't think I've ever said that number before.
No, it's a big number. I'll set it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, seems it is. Make sure you give me all the stuff.
Looking to see if there's any other of this. Right now, it's looking like just these two here.
The two?
Yeah.
Fair enough. Is there anything else in regards to all this right now?
No, that's it.
Okay.
If I get tomorrow, I'll let you know.
The only thing she needs is you to sign one of your personal checks.
Sign the check for that, ma?
Seven, eight, and just sign it and hand it to Peggy.
And not to exceed, right, so we'll go over that, so let me know how much comes out of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, man.
Well, let's, Peggy, let the fellows sit on this discussion, appointment of a civil service commissioner.
Back in January, when we did all of our appointments, somehow I missed the civil service commissioner. And we have had a gentleman on there for quite a few years, and he is now 79 years old. And so I wondered, did you want to reappoint him to this board? Or do you want to try to find someone else? I mean, he's been on for quite a few years. Have we talked to him to see whether?
How exactly does this commissioner do? I don't even, you know.
Whatever the civil service commission has to meet, then, and it's not very often that they call the civil service commission together, but I believe it's to appoint, oh, I'm trying to remember, I don't remember exactly. But it's, it's an appointment process, and you have to call the commission together to do the appointment. I'm trying to remember if it's judge, if it's judges. I'm sorry, I'll have to call and get clarification on that, but we do need a member on that board in case that board needs to meet sometimes.
Well, if it has to do with judges in that, should we have somebody that hasn't had a legal background or something like that?
Doesn't have to. This person hasn't had, and people in the past that I remember have haven't had.
We don't.
Just someone willing to serve.
We officially don't have one, right now we're not appointed, or we should think of maybe someone else?
We didn't.
We did not appoint.
Yeah, I mean, you could appoint the same person, but I just, questions would range.
What, is it a four-year appointment, or two-year, or what?
Six.
Six?
Well, maybe then that would. Yeah, I think, so do we have the option of finding, asking folks? Kind of like the zoning board needs another member, is this kind of the same thing? We just need someone willing to?
And I can get you a description on what the civil service does.
Yeah.
Or you can explain to people.
Because they're gonna ask, what is this I'm signing up for?
Yeah.
I think we should ask the person who's doing it now, even though I know it's a six-year, and just to see what that person thinks, and then also, if that person does not want to, then maybe even ask for some recommendations.
That's very good, because they would know people who could do the job.
Right, they've done it, so I think, you know, that would be.
That's a good idea, Sandy.
You don't want that position?
Just one more.
Obligation or board?
One more board to sit on.
All right, I have no idea.
Put it on next week's agenda to find out what they do.
Yeah, give us the description, then we might be able to go over the name.
Go through the two that you, yep, we should have that taken care of. Okay. So, we need to discuss the Secure Benefit System Flex Plan changes.
Okay. Put that one over here. We received a notice from EBS, or not EBS, Secure Benefits. Amid all the continued uncertainty of COVID, the IRS has continued to review and make changes and adjustments to rules regarding our employer's Flex NHRA plan. Below is the summary of recently approved temporary changes to the plan that the IRS is allowing for the remainder of our 2020 plan year. They are asking us to review the notice and determine what is best for our county. Employers can amend health FSA, independent care FSA plans that begin in 2020 to allow for changes to annual elections or to allow new elections. Employers are not required to immediately amend their plans and have the ability to limit how many changes are allowed. So employers may allow participants to do the following, if you change this. Make a new election, even if the employee has previously declined. Revoke an existing election and make a new election. And a different health coverage. Revoke an existing election and make a new election in a plan not offered. Increase, decrease on their elections. This has to do with what we call a cafeteria plan. So if someone was not on the plan currently, if they didn't join up to begin January 1, if you said yes, this would allow them to come on right now. If someone is currently on the plan, they would be able to say, oh, golly, I thought I was wanting to spend a thousand this year, now I think I'm gonna spend 1,500, I want to change it. In the past, they've been locked on that amount.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. It'd be, I can't say our office is in favor, let's put it that way.
That's just more of an accounting thing.
We would have to send out notices to everyone that works for the county, have people start mid-year, if someone didn't do it and decided, okay, I think I want to spend a thousand dollars by the end of December. You've only got a few months, and we've got to take that ball out of their check before the end of the year. This is just something special they're doing for COVID, in case somebody had some special circumstances. It's entirely up to you guys if you want to allow that and let people do that, and if so, we will comply, and we will send notices out, and we will have everybody.
Have you had any of the employees come and say, oh, I wish I would have done this, or I wish I would have done more? Has anybody?
One person, and that's what got this started.
Oh, okay.
And it wasn't for a COVID-related issue, it was another issue, but.
It must have been something else, non-COVID related.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, I don't think I'm gonna use it, oh, jeez, no, so I wish I would have signed up in January or November, I think you have to do it.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, in effect, allowing new people to come on for the last five months here, and allowing people that are already on the system to make changes and how much money they wanted to set aside through the end of the year.
So the new person that was, or new people that would come on, they'd still have to go back to January and pay that amount, or they'd just pay from September forward?
Yep, moving forward.
What about if they want, someone wasn't gonna have, didn't have as many, because they haven't been going to appointments and things like that, maybe they're not using it as much?
Yeah, I can.
Maybe they go either way, I mean, because there's a lot of people that probably are not.
Increase, decrease.
Okay, I didn't know for sure if I.
It could be a nightmare for you guys in the office.
You guys have to use yours by the end of the calendar year?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Use your limited.
Most people that were on, they have signed up in November, November, December for the plan, because it starts January 1, and then it goes through December 31st. So if anything you haven't used by December 31st, if you have some bills you just haven't turned in, you have until March to turn those in.
But it still has to be dated by.
Built by then.
The end of the, end of the year.
Yeah, yeah. And then if you haven't used up that money, it comes back to the county, even though it's been deducted from the employee's paycheck. We don't have that happen too often, but it does happen.
I, yeah, I know, I've done it all the time, it's like, ah.
Well, I think, my opinion is leave it the way it is, but.
I do, I agree, Rick, I agree with that.
I can go either way, I could understand it both ways.
I'll make a motion to leave our Flex Plan the way it is and not go with these changes.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of leaving it as is? Aye, opposed? As is, it is. This, this thing right here.
Uh, no, that's something I was supposed to amend the agenda for, and I forgot to do that. So I don't think it requires them authorizing you, I think you can just sign my original.
Okay.
And we'll be fine.
All right.
Because they're willing me to sign it, and I thought, I always have you guys do the insurance stuff.
All righty. So anything else on that then, or?
No.
Okay, uh, let's move on to committee reports, I'm signing this.
I didn't have any actual committee reports, I did go up to the dog shelter on Friday, did a walk through with electrician up there, they're getting close to being done. Plumbers were there hooking up the air conditioner and the, and heating, which we don't need right now, but it's getting very close.
Rick, did you want to bring that up while you're talking? Dog shelter?
I don't want to do any more down there completely.
No. Thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah. And also, just to get it out more into the public, it says here, "On behalf of the board, members of the Humboldt Community Animal Shelter, also known as the Moffitt Animal Shelter, I would like to sincerely inform you that at the time, we are unable to take on any responsibility of preparing animal control officer for Humboldt County and surrounding counties. The shelter will not accept the animals once picked up by the ACO. We house them and provide them with appropriate care once they have brought to the shelter by the animal control officer. We look forward to a great working relationship in the future between the ACO and the shelter board members." This is new to me.
So they're not, did I hear that right? They're not willing to have a hired officer or to have it through their board?
That's what they said, I know they've had lots of conversations with people, because I've been seeing the emails. And it says they're not taking on, it's just that when they say an animal control officer for Humboldt and surrounding counties. So that's, that's basically what they're saying, they're not gonna pick them up. They're not saying they're not gonna take the animals, they're just not gonna.
They'll go pick them up.
They're not gonna go pick them up. We, of course, me and David have spoken quite adamantly at these meetings that that's what we expect of them.
Right, I know that's why we do what we've been doing, because we thought they were gonna take that over.
Yes.
Before we put money into it. Because they would accept our animals.
Right.
But they're saying that they don't, they won't hire an officer to go around picking them up.
Yeah, they said they're gonna take the animals, but they're not gonna hire somebody to go around and pick them up, but it'd be our job to.
Provide the animals where they're sheltered.
Yeah.
To their shelter.
Yeah.
Provide the person that's gonna pick them up to take them there.
They're not saying it couldn't be the same person, but we'd have to have an agreement with that person that we are paying them, maybe that's what it is.
Can you get some clarification on that?
I will have to.
We got a meeting this week, so we'll, you gotta be up on that.
Because we, you know, they keep telling us, oh, you guys are gonna do that, and it goes, no, we're not doing it. But I said, we will pay you, pay someone to do it, for every animal they pick up, we pay. So maybe, maybe it's just clarification, I don't know, I wasn't at the last shelter meeting, because I was gone.
You got a regularly scheduled meeting this week, Dave said?
Yeah, on Wednesday night, I believe it was.
That would be a great time to.
Says the shelter will accept the animals once picked up by the animal control officer. In other words, they're not gonna hire somebody to go out and be an animal control officer, but they will take the animals.
Yeah, so they're, probably because, like you say, they've been working trying to find somebody to do this job, and they're not having any luck.
I got it. Nobody's got any luck getting animal control officer, who are?
No, the last month, they spent almost $3,000, those last claims and today's claim.
That was on the, that was on the animal.
Peggy, I don't.
I didn't interfere, sorry, I didn't interfere.
I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Well, this got me distracted. And then I was done with that TP Anderson saying their bi-monthly checks.
All right, go ahead. All right, Peggy, I feel that's a meeting.
Okay. All right, Monday, I had to be over at Waterloo, we were doing the, that's the 17th, Peggy, I'm sorry, August 17th. We were doing the interviews for our CEO for County Social Services. They went, we had five, they went great. We had some really, really good candidates. We decided, though, to narrow it down to two to have second interviews. And that will be later this week, I think it's Wednesday, no, it's next week, I'll just hit this week. Getting my weeks mixed up. But anyway, so hopefully, our goal is to have a CEO in place by October 1. That is our, our goal.
So are they, I didn't mean to ask names or anything, but are they from the area? Are they Midwest, or do you have a lot of people looking from all over?
Yeah. We, we had a really good candidate from Rochester, Minnesota area, a couple of them from Illinois, two from Iowa. So, yeah, no, it was a very good and really good credentials and everything, so I think we're gonna have, whatever way we go, it'll be a good, I think it'll be good for us. And then, it was a long day, though, because I was, you were here at 8:30 for ours, and I didn't get out of Waterloo until 6 o'clock at night.
Had a headache?
You know, I, driving home, I was just, you know, I kind of go through everything, and it was, that windshield time was very interesting, I was choo, choo, choo. My head was bouncing all over. And then Tuesday, we had our kitty cat daycare meeting here, it was on Zoom. The, we're, financially, we're doing a little better, I mean, we're still not in, in the black 100%, but once we get, oh, there's a USDA grant loan type thing that they, once we get all of the, like, there's Onne Nicker in the Gia, and there's some other computers and things like that, they'll get that money back, and then we should be closer to that. But there is a loan payment due by the end of August, and that's from the county, the city, and the hospital. So, and that's an amount of $15,379.56 for this one. Is that right, Peggy, I've got that amount right? And then we'll have another one that, that'll be due in December. And I don't have the figure for that one, I was gonna ask you before, but I can't remember what that one was. We didn't talk about the amount for that.
Yeah, I have the number.
That's all. Of course, as always, we're having a hard time with employees because of the pay again. Until we get in the black better, we can't afford to pay higher. I mean, it's just a.
More of a goodness of the heart type job.
It is, right now, yeah. That's all I have.
When we approved that kitty cat and that claims today.
Mm-hmm, yep. It was, yeah.
I had a meeting, Zoom meeting, I tried to dial in and dial in and dial in, and I never did get through for the Boone River, they had a meeting on Thursday at 12. never did get through for the Blue River, yeah, meeting on Thursday at two o'clock, and I, I can't get dialed into it for some reason, I tried for about ten minutes and didn't work, but I didn't, running home, I didn't have internet, so I was trying to open my phone.
Yeah, I tried that on my phone for the last one, but I always see, and it wouldn't take my numbers when I punched them in. It leaves one of the numbers off, and then it wouldn't go.
Yeah.
Wouldn't take my number, so I missed that meeting, that's the only thing I had this week.
Okay, I didn't have any official meetings last week, but I did want to mention in my lead commissioner role, I may have said this previously, but we've got everything wrapped up to this point on non, all the hard surface roads have been gone over, so non-thistle control in the north half, and the colony and everything is done, well, the whole colony actually, on the hard surface, but the program is for the balance, be the secondary roads, north half of the county for all thistle control. So I went through the numbers, budget, and where we're at with Don Reefer this past week, and we're in a good spot, we're not anywhere close to over budget, which is good, just the way things have worked out. So, remember, fall, so probably the latter part of September, control will be, is targeted for the balance of the north half, if there is any particularly thistles that are egregious in the southern half, in any of the right-of-ways, we need a definite, definite location, and they can certainly be taken care of.
Yeah, they're took down in spring.
Certainly get, but, any of, biggest thing on right-of-way, unless you just say you're going to go like this particular year, we did all the hard surface roads for thistles, period, so they drive every mile, and did a fine job, got rid of a lot of problems, even got rid of some giant rag leaves we targeted those, so that's good, but otherwise, if you just say drive every mile, it can tell you exactly what that's going to cost, because you get so many miles, it's so much mile, may have very minimal amount of expense in the chemicals, so it's, I don't, when I go around, I don't see a lot of thistles get this any. Getting better. It is, that's good. Yeah, of course, I know specifically, but they're getting better.
You also have a lot of farmers that do a lot of their own, which helps drastically keep it in my.
They typically, so I'm just saying now, keeping an eye out and split the colony basically in half, north to south, because it's targeted to the north, that's, that's part of the program. They will follow the balance of the, you know, the gravel roads, secondary roads this fall, because they've already done all the hard surface in the whole colony, so if you see any, in and out and about, secondary roads, wow, there's an ugly looking patch of thistles, please get an exact location so we can get those treated this fall as well. So that's, just so you think of it now, and they, that is very effective, and that's what keeps us from seeing so many thistles, is they're, we're getting them under control, and we want to keep them under control, so.
Well, maybe Kent will graciously put that in the article.
Yeah, anyone can.
The farmers, you know, but the farmers will, are the ones that are.
If there's something that's just a, a problem that, you know, none of us have seen, and no one knows, they can simply just contact me, but I need a precise location, and thistles in particular, because that's what the fall, you know, later September, early October, spraying program is, thistles.
You want to go cut what plan?
Do I want to? Well, if you show me the plan, I'll be happy to cut it down.
Down by the rat hole, instead of going under the rat hole, go straight out.
Okay.
Just on the other side of the trail.
I'd be happy to.
Just for real.
I've seen some of those on Three Rivers Trail, another thing, this is, so that was my note on lead control, the thought process, it says, take action or think about, and I don't even know that it's, it's probably just an approval by the board of supervisors, because this goes back to two boards that I currently serve on, one is 911 and one is EMA, and I know in the 911 bylaws is stated that the chairman is always the current board of supervisors, which is fine, but a lot of these boards don't meet very often, and it seems like when you have a yearly turnover on a board, you never get your mind around it very well. So, is, any thought processes on, the two in particular I know of, and we could look through the list, how it's stated, who the chairman is designated, would it be all right if it was changed, and I don't think we have to do, I think the boards have to amend that, that a board of supervisor member, because we all kind of pick and choose and get assigned to boards, so it's always a possibility that it, you know, but it doesn't have to be the chairman, because you, you have no continuity, Rick has his insurance thing, he keeps putting them in insurance, because it's not something you do every week.
No, you don't.
But you still have to have your mind around it, and if you, somebody different did it every year, you would barely have your mind around it that year, and I think that was just an example, so, just throwing that out there, I don't think we have to, other than be agreeable as the board of supervisors, and that's something that would lend more continuity to those boards, if the same person was willing to stay on, and it didn't have to be the chairperson.
So these other organizations would have to amend their bylaws?
It appears so, as I've looked at bylaws.
So basically, it's up to those organizations to amend their bylaws.
Exactly, if they just had a, those boards just said, no, we wouldn't amend this part of the bylaws, well, then that's just the way it's going to be, because the bylaws, those boards will vote the bylaws, not the board of supervisors. So, just throwing that out there, but it's more the continuity of it, and the understandability if you're on which other board, right now, it's EMA and 911 that specify board supervisor, chairman of the board of supervisors, or chairperson, and I just, it's been brought up that it's such a, a year goes by pretty quick, you don't have a lot of meeting, and you're just kind of understanding of the workings of that board and what's going on, and then, oh, the next person goes in there, and then they're not as very well up to speed, it'd be like if we changed our other committee boards. Hey, I can imagine, Sandy, if you were on your board for one year, then someone else jumped in, they don't have a clue what you're doing.
No, no, because I'm just, I mean, it's weird, I mean, I still don't have a toehoof graph of everything.
I'm on some, too, not, but that you.
I've been on one for two years and still didn't figure out what was going on.
So, I don't think it's anything we have to do, but I think we would have to be, if there's anyone that says that's not a good idea, I just wanted to throw that out for food.
Yeah, I'd send out a request for the other boards to change their ruling.
Yeah, it has to be, well, right now, I'm on both of those boards, and there's been, the 911 board, there's going to be some revisions in the bylaws anyway, that's why I'm mentioning this now, and, because it's not, the board of supervisors didn't set this, when they created these other boards, they set it, and then they requested the chairperson of the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors really had nothing to do with it, but, so, just, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think some too, where they say it's the chairperson or designate, you know, maybe that's where you want to, I think that's what went off the line, I don't want to push the chairperson or designate.
I mean, the mayors, or the small towns that represent these boards, they changed to, over the years, it always said mayor, but then it got changed to mayor or representative or appointed or representative of the town by the mayor, so that some of these boards that I'm on right now, there's a representative, typically, not always, but typically, like a city council person, that the mayor points to be on the board, and then they're full right voting member of that board, so, it'd be just on the, because otherwise, there's no continuity in it, I mean, if we switched our committee boards from that we're on, we'd all be lost, or some, one of the boards I'm on, lost anyway on it, but it would be tough if somebody changed every year on that board, so, that's all I'm saying, it's just, I don't think it's anything we have to really do, I just see if there was any thought process, it sounds like everybody kind of understands that'd be probably a good idea.
Makes sense.
Anything from you, is that? My say, I think the boards, whichever, that got printed in there, the board of supervisors really had nothing to probably do with that, probably back in the day, they just elected to say, they wanted always have a, I think they always wanted to have a member of the board supervisor, and they happened to write chairman in there instead of just member of, so. Well, I have.
Let's do it, Jerry.
Peggy, can I?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Sorry.
I thought you said.
Well, this out to the board members, we received our newest prediction of what our local option sales tax will be, on one side is the 2019 number, four hundred and twenty-nine, seven eighty-five was what they were projecting for nineteen twenty, and then the one on the other side is for 2021, and it's four seventy-five, nine sixty-nine oh six, an increase of about forty-six thousand.
That's surprising.
I am surprised, yeah.
Well, that's good, but I mean, you talk to people, the economy is just booming, even with this COVID stuff, it's amazing. Certain facets of it. People are spending money right, of course, they're getting handed money right now.
They have to. A lot of, they're not using cash, then when you got to pay with a credit card, you don't see that.
Yeah.
They pay it with a credit card, and then they forget about it.
Well, this is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, along that same line, I did send a note off to the newspaper about our local option to let people know.
About the election.
For the, at least for the incorporated area, you know, it's not a change, this has been in the facts for quite a while, things to that effect, to let people know, because I'm afraid not enough people are aware that there's an election coming up on September 8, and it's an important election, not only for the unincorporated area, but for every city within our county. Every city has a different ballot, they all have different wording, and it's important for them to get their money also, if they don't, I mean, if it doesn't get voted through, then they're just out of the mix, they won't get any money, but that money would be distributed back to everybody else, but that community would lose their money, and that could hurt as far as some projects go, so just want people to be aware of that. Another, we'll be getting update, just for your information, and then the last thing I had, came in the mail this morning, IMFCA is having an election of some board members, and I don't know if you know anybody that wants to run, I've looked at the names that are on there, good people, all three of them, so, if you just want me to mark them and send it back in, I can do that, or if you want to recommend somebody else, we can add them to that list also. There's all I got. Oh, did you notice the plucking lot got stretched?
Yeah, very nice, new. And I noticed, noticed the hand sanitizer, the plug door.
Yes.
Wish I was more.
I actually have squirted a little bit.
Well, try it out one, see how we like it.
Like an orange smell to it.
Yeah, I liked it, okay, I've kind of orange smell.
Yeah, definitely, I liked it.
It don't hurt.
Now you ready for me to open my mouth?
Yes.
Yeah, now you can.
I'm hoping to adjourn.
I'll second. I'll get this to Sandy. Any discussion, all those in favor?